... times, things like that, which spells out a lot of the equipment, station locations, those types of things, which that was the same scoring system used by I S O. We went through all of these photos at the last session of various pieces of apparatus. The demographic, the growth criteria, if you will, was generated from, from these sources, out of the comp plan, and then DOLA state demog- or growth rate of, I'm sorry, I don't know what, the, the growth rates estimated at one point nine two, based on that. Population projections that were used for the purposes of this, this nexus. And I think we had some discussion at the last meeting that in order to get four thousand seven hundred and sixteen additional people in town, we may have to have a different sort of building design in order to make that happen.
Garri, is, is that within the city limits, are, are these?
All of these projections are within city limits because these impact fees affect only city limits.
Right. I didn't know if it was part of the, oh, okay. Yeah, my, good, thank you.
So, but very big question about it's, it's all based on city population, city growth, stuff within existing corporate boundaries, if you will. So, based on that four thousand seven hundred and sixteen population growth over the next thirty years, or nineteen sixty five E Q Rs.
So, we're supposed to double our population in twenty years based on this?
Exactly.
That's, that has to assume we're annexing.
It's only a fifty percent increase in our population.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's, you're, yeah.
But you're right, I mean.
But they can't assume, that's gotta assume annexation and stuff like that. I mean, it has, it has to.
Based, based on, from two thousand two to two thousand fifteen, we had a total, when you count all residential units developed during that period of time, of, of two hundred and fifty three residential units.
But we did have a recession.
Sorry, I'm sorry, four hundred, four hundred and eighty one in total, one hundred and eighty nine multifamily, no, I got the wrong one, sorry, I got, I got some, gotta print it out the correct one on here. But.
So, what's our population change?
Uh, but in order for us to.
Two thousand twenty ten, which really is the best.
Uh, yeah, I mean, well, that'd be a fifty percent increase in our population in twenty years.
Well, this would be, yeah.
Yeah.
Say, if you look backwards, I can't imagine we increased, even if you, if you X out the recession.
Let me pull up the actual spread.
Say, two thousand twenty ten, that's X-ing out a lot of the recession, I can't imagine we increased by fifty percent then.
Yeah, and, well, there, there's actually kinda two, two potential issues. One is the fact that this number, this increase in population is, is very unrealistic, and if we were to put it in a more realistic range, then we'd be looking at quadrupling or quintupling the recommended fire impact fee, which doesn't work. But the other bigger problem with it is this is just looking at residential. Fire impact fees are paid by commercial as well, and there's been no calculation of that into this, in that regard. It's, it's, I mean, he is, he is assuming a population increase, he's basing the entire.
Based on, based on demographics of population.
A population increase versus someone building an office building, or someone building a.
Garage.
Motel, or whatever, you know, and so.
Good point.
Alan, so there's, there's, you know, I think there's a, there's a kinda big disconnect right there in this, in this analysis. And, and.
You're gonna help me make sure I catch your.
Yeah, yeah, I'll take notes.
So, we can get them back.
Even if it's relaxation, I don't, it would be really hard to get another find out the people in here without.
And I don't know, I, I would have to defer back to Louis to try to, to figure out how you would project business growth.
I mean, it's, there's been a gazillion studies about population growth up the valley, and maybe you just extrapolate are part of that, and I think that's a really great way to look at things. I mean, there's parts of the valley that are really gonna have an opportunity to really expand, if there's political will to do so. We're not part of that equation, for the most part, and there's a few things you can do, but unless you wanna annex all the way down to Cal Creek.
Yeah, it's.
Well, does, does this, does this, and like, maybe you answered this, anticipate any annexation at all?
He said no.
I, I don't, I don't believe so. I think it's based on historic demographics of, of the trends, projecting them forward, if you will, on, you know, general population growth throughout the valley.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, Louis isn't here to speak for the total.
I mean, I'm guessing if he's tying it, you know, if he's used the comp plan as his sort of growth premise, that does in fact anticipate annexations, you know, through the urban growth.
Well, I was gonna say, yeah, for my own.
Yeah, exactly, down the, you could get the south end of town.
Yeah, and I mean, that is, when you look at that, though, I mean, that is really the only option we have for annexations is, you know, that, that Burgeny Ranch, or whatever it was called, that had a name, Glenwood Bridge, I guess, was the name for it. I guess we could try and skip over the Jackson Ranch, you know, do some kind of a, you know, leapfrog or go around it, or something like that, but, but the reality is, we're, we're pretty much done with our growth of our city for all practical purposes, in that, in that regard, I mean, other than creating more dense housing.
Well, in the last twenty years, what annexation have you done with all?
Uh, it's a good question.
Well, the only other places is in West Columbus behind the mall.
There's a, yeah, some of, but, but a lot of that's already, you, you would argue, developed, for all credit, I mean, you, well, you do have the demo's property, but.
Yeah, and those drugs are commercial, they're not, they're not residential.
Yeah, and, and why, and I do think that, you know, we need to look at this from a standpoint of, you know, I think the data included, you know, commercial building permits that you, that you had, and how many fees were, were, at least, in the years that the building department was collecting them, you broke it out, single family, A E U, multifamily, et cetera. And I'm, you know, this isn't casting expirions, you know, I mean, when, when, from two thousand two to two thousand twelve, we just got a number of, the total fees were X, and so we're, we don't know how much of that was commercial versus residential.
Well, and, and under the existing impact fire, EMS impact fee, it was a very simple formula of one, one single family equated to a dollar figure based on that escalator, and commercial, and everything else was considered commercial, was one, one E Q R per nineteen hundred square feet. It was a very simple formula, there wasn't, there wasn't a distinction for A D Us and things like that, it was.
But I get, yeah, I guess what I'm wondering, though, is, you know, how much of that total fee was generated by residential growth, and how much of it was generated by commercial growth? And if we go assume a similar, right, I don't think from two thousand nine to two thousand fifteen is probably a good basis to go on, because that was such a low growth period that, you know, that's probably not representative of what we would hope to see, I think, in the future. And so, I think from two thousand two to two thousand eight, if you would, if we could perhaps figure out some way to determine, you know, all those fees you collected, this much was residential, and this much was commercial, and, uh.
Okay.
Hi Dana.
How are you doing?
Good, how are you doing?
Good.
And, you know, then, we need to throw that factor into this analysis, anyway, of saying, okay, so it's not a four thousand seven hundred, whatever, population increase, it's maybe it's a fifteen, population increase of fifteen hundred, and a, and this much more commercial growth, which we can expect some commercial growth, we can expect redevelopment in Sixth Street, we can expect redevelopment in Confluence, or the development of Confluence, whatever you wanna call it, and the area behind, I don't know, Meadows, which would be an annexation, I mean, one of the mall concessions, or maybe, you know, some additional growth out of Glenwood Meadows, for that matter, you know, there, there's some additional commercial that can happen that isn't being taken into account in this, in this analysis.
I mean, between two thousand nine and two thousand fifteen, it was all commercial.
Yeah.
Gradually.
Right.
A few, few nickels over here.
I think we had, I think we had two, let's see, in, uh.
Two single family apartments?
In two thousand nine, we had a total of, uh, we had ten, no, twelve residents, residential permits in two thousand nine, but I was still just kinda getting into it. And then in two thousand ten, we had two, in two thousand eleven, we had four, in two thousand twelve, we had two, not counting the Glenwood Green, you know, that, we had sixty two if you counted the Glenwood Green. Two thousand thirteen, we had two, two thousand fourteen, we had one.
Do you have any ground up?
Yeah.
New.
Well, these, yeah, that's, that's what, that's what you, yes, I'm assuming that's what, not, this didn't include remodels or anything, right?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, so, and then in two thousand fifteen, we had a total of six, eight, eight total starts in two thousand fifteen, so, yeah, it was pretty anemic for residential growth during that period of time.
And I think that you could, although we didn't have significant fire data, the hurry info that the building department was tracking, those, that same growth even from two thousand two to two thousand eight would apply as far as what types of property it was.
Yeah.
But because of the very simple way that the fire department calculated and collected the impact fees, you know, I, I, it'd be a little more difficult, but that research, that data could be researched.
Yeah.
But I think it's, it's gonna mirror what, what Andrew's staff got, if you had those same numbers of commercial versus residential would apply.
And then, you know, and then, you know, just my thought process goes, I mean, to the next question of, in terms of quote, impact, it's kinda like the way we tried analyzing water and sewer, a, a ten bedroom, ten thousand square foot, single family home, it's probably gonna use a different amount of water than a four hundred square foot efficiency apartment, you know, and, and similar, you know, I don't know how you, you measure that at all, or if it's even remotely possible to even estimate it, but is there a, a difference in your impact, in other words, by commercial growth, or I should say, non-residential versus residential? And if so, would you characterize more of the impact as being residential, and more of it as being non-residential, or somewhere in between?
I think, I think for us, from a, from a fire EMS point of view, I think it's, it's more, it's not so much a matter of what the property is, as it is the number of people that, that we may respond to on EMS call, or in the case, in the case of residential, again, how many people are in the household, what exponentially, Louis, Louis came up with a plan, and I don't know whether you did get a chance to review that, it's, it's a slide toward the end of the PowerPoint, I've got it there on the screen, but, I mean, it's pretty useless on the screen. It was, it was included, it's the.
So, a hotel would be a lot more impactful than a marijuana grow house?
Exactly, a hotel would be more impactful, both of which would probably be protected by sprinkler systems.
Alan, that, that, that's also kinda part of, I'm just trying to think overall about stepping back and looking at the idea of fire and EMS impacts, you know, what, where do the impacts come from, and, and, you know, how are they felt, I guess, by the, by the, by the fire department and the emergency services? In other words, is a, is a sprinkled, you know, because even in commercial, you have different, different fire ratings, you know, you have your, your light hazard, your, uh, what is it, norm, I can't think of the terms now.
Uh, light, moderate.
Yeah, and then, then you have your, your high hazard, you know, but those are always sprinkled, whereas a lot of a residential is not. So, is there a less, lesser impact even to a high hazard sprinkled occupancy versus a un-sprinkled residency, and is it, is that even applicable, is, is ninety percent of your calls ambulance type, you know, medical type emergencies versus fire?
Well, sixty five to seventy percent of what the fire department currently does is EMS.
Okay.
And that's, you know, it's purely driven by numbers of people, and, and the, the, the things they engage in, whether, you know, whether it's riding the bike paths, to how good their housekeeping is back at home, to how they operate within a, within the commercial scenario. So, you know, it's a very, very hard thing to quantify.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it gets really hard to wrap your head around just exactly what the impact is. You know, one way that, that I look at trying to equate it is, is looking back at those past population growth numbers, and what that's done to our overall call volume. But even that is a very, very hard thing to quantify, they, you know, the economic downturn created a, a downturn in call volume. How or why that happens, I, I think we still had the same number of residents here, but our call volume dipped right along with the economy. And now that the economy has, has started to come back up, we're seeing it, you know, an increasing volume.
But one thing you didn't have is, a lot of the down valley workforce had gone elsewhere to look for work, so you didn't have that rush hour component, which.
That probably has.
Creates a lot of your calls.
Yes, yes, one way or another.
Can we charge C got with a fire and EMS impact?
I, we're Carl going. But it is, it's a very difficult thing to quantify, and I think that, I think that in Louis's plan, I, when I reviewed it, and I, again, I apologize, if, if you can find it on your screens there, it's like the, the, almost the last slide in the presentation. But he's saying a single family home is, is one E Q R. He's saying that a sprinkled multifamily building probably presents half as much impact per bedroom, if you will, than a single family home does. A, a lot of that has to do with the square footage, the types of furnishings that are put in there, I mean, it, you can make all kinds of, essentially, conclusions, you know, that most of the furniture we move into our single family residence is now burned like gasoline, because those old outdated, well, outdated by legal terms of furniture and, and fire spread gradings, and all of that stuff has been subsequently removed, and so a lot of the furniture we buy, all the furnishings burn much more readily, so fire grows much more rapidly now in those fuels. The impact to us is, is we need to get there sooner if we're gonna be effective in the sprinkled buildings, that's what sprinklers do, of course, is, is deter that need for us to be there quickly. EMS is EMS, we, you know, more people living in a household, I suppose, the more potential we're gonna end up going on a run at some point or another, for one of them. So, this, this impact fee plan becomes much more complex, in that there is a graduated formula there for A D Us, single, um, one and two bedroom multifamily, and then a pretty simple multiplier for each additional bedroom. So, I think that it, it offers some, some of the flexibility that maybe we didn't have in the old plan.
Do you know what we're currently charging per E Q R in our current code?
Uh, that was, yes, we're at fourteen, unfortunately, I put it in your packet but forgot to print a copy for myself. It's, was it also included in your packet as a separate page? We're, we're at fourteen hundred. Do you have that in here?
Hope we're not.
I believe we are charging seventeen twenty per E Q R now.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay.
That started out, that, that impact fee started out at nine hundred and fifty eight dollars back in two thousand and two, when they were adopted, and that five percent escalator has allowed it to grow to that seventeen hundred dollar figure.
Nine what?
Nine fifty eight was what it started at, oh two. And per the other slide in that current plan, we were looking at resetting it based on, based on an overall, based on an overall, we felt like total cost of additional improvements, which that list of improvements included another, another ambulance, another, another aerial truck, and some additional fire station space in order to house that building. And that's, again, based on that growth that we were just discussing, that potential growth, which we don't, we don't necessarily, probably have agreement right now on what that growth may in fact move on. But we estimated a total impact over twenty years based on those capital needs of about five million dollars, half of which we hoped to get from impact fees, which brought us to resetting the impact fee right now at twelve hundred and ninety dollars.
And is the commercial rate still the same? Twelve ninety per nineteen hundred square feet?
No, the, under the, under the new plan.
It's a point three E Q R per a thousand square feet, I think, is what it is.
So, that represents theoretically a thirty percent decrease in that.
Yeah, 'cause under the two thousand two ordinance, it was per nineteen hundred square feet.
Exactly, and now we're talking point three.
Per thousand?
Per thousands. So, that's even more, that's, that's nearly a fifty percent decrease on what we were charging. And you had asked at the last one about historic collection, and I, I think you.
Yeah, I think you provided that.
Since two thousand two, we've, we've collected.
Eight hundred and.
Eight hundred and.
Sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty eight dollars and twenty six cents.
Right, so, there you go. So, we have, you know, I mean, it's, it's a substantial amount of money over time, and it's, if, but if you're buying them, you know, if you're putting a million dollar addition on a fire station, it's needed.
We're buying a new ladder.
Yeah.
One and a half million.
Yeah. Or even a, even a quarter of a million dollar ambulance that needs to be added to the fleet of our EMS.
Well, it's almost impossible, I mean, you have a, a, just a true guess as to what the growth is going to be, you don't really know what your requirements are gonna be to equipment and personnel wise, twenty years from now, and you really don't know what's gonna happen in terms of your, your structure viability, and all of that, although it's going in the wrong direction.
Which is what makes it such a challenging prospect, to just try to come up with our best defensible rational nexus of what we might need, knowing full well that it's gonna be very, very hard to, to anticipate accurately.
And you will put more development on the edge of, of the wilderness.
Oh, yeah?
You have fire issues.
Right, yeah, and that, that definitely impacts, you know, what the fire department's needs are, and impact fees by, by, by virtue of what they are, are for capital needs and capital needs only.
So, it looks like a significant reduction for commercial development, it appears to be anyway.
Yes.
By my reading.
And, and a significant decrease in multifamily.
And we have a rational, rational nexus to get there, so, and then, is there anything wrong with it, or?
Yeah, it basically doesn't account for commercial at all, right now, is the problem, and it, so I think it's, it could be argued that it's very flawed, I think.
I mean, it should be higher?
I don't, not necessarily, I just, it, I mean, as it's calculated, it's calculated entirely on the basis of residential growth, and it's, and, and, you know, if we go back, as Andrew said, since two thousand nine, almost all of our growth has been commercial, and, and commercial growth carries with it a certain element of fire EMS impact, and, and this analysis, I'm just, I'm not saying it should, it should be higher, it should be lower, I, I, unfortunately, I'm just saying that.
You need that information.
Yeah, that it needs to be evaluated, and, you know, we need to, we need to figure out what, you know, how does commercial growth fit into this, from a strictly, you know.
Well, it's gonna cost us more money to do that, so, I think, take our best guess.
So, I mean, if you, if you multiply it out, if you got a twenty thousand square foot commercial building, you got six E Q Rs.
Right.
But there, commercial's not good enough, I mean, there's, there is different kinds of commercial development that have different kinds of impact.
Right, and, you know, my, my only point is, I, I understand how we calculate, you know, if I'm gonna go out and build a ten thousand square foot commercial building, I know how we're gonna calculate it based on this. My point is, is the entire reason for a rational nexus is so that it is actually defensible, so that when we charge somebody a fee, they don't sue us and say, I'm not paying your fee, 'cause it's bogus, and quite frankly.
But it's.
You know, this, this analysis is entirely based on only residential growth, and, and doesn't consider commercial growth whatsoever, and I think commercial growth is a very significant component of our, of our development, and our, our fire EMS impacts, and so, when it, I, I, unfortunately, and I'm not trying to throw stones at anybody, I just, I think the analysis is entirely flawed in that regard, and, you know, until, until we, we look at it under that context, you know, 'cause the other, the other reality that we under, we, we've all recognized is that there's no way, in any scenario, we're gonna see fourth, an increase, population increase of four thousand seven hundred people over the next twenty years, and so, if, if we were to bring that back down to a rational basis, you know, we might see a quarter of that, well, then, this number goes from twelve hundred to forty eight hundred, do you see what I'm saying? And so, the, 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 the analysis needs to support the number at the end of the day, but it needs to be rational.
There, I, I mean, you, there's an engineering level of rationalization, and then there's a legal level of rationalization, I'm not the legal opinion here, but.
Do you remember Carl, Carl's in the hallway, you need him?
That might be a good idea.
Well, it has to be fair and equitable to everybody.
Yeah, I mean, I think to get what you want's gonna cost us another twenty thousand dollars, you know, if you get what you want's gonna cost us another twenty thousand dollars, and I don't, I don't know if we wanna spend that kinda money on this, especially when we have a recommendation to drop the fees thirty percent.
Um, that's all right. I have a concern about this study, and I'm not saying this just to try and throw stones at anybody or be critical, but this fire and EMS analysis is entirely based on, on purely residential growth, and population increase resulting from residential growth, and doesn't take into account any aspect of commercial growth, and commercial growth certainly carries a component of fire and EMS impact, and, and in fact, it's probably paid throughout history, perhaps the majority of our eight hundred and sixteen thousand dollars that we've identified since two thousand, whatever it was, or whatever I think is the number. But, so my, my concern is that the quote, rational nexus is not rational, and, and on top of that, then.
There's no analysis, I'm sorry, I haven't read the study, but there's no, when we did the original analysis way back then, as I recall, we were able to correlate a rough square footage of commercial to equate to kind of that E Q would be equivalent, you know, residential unit impact, and I thought there was some methodology for how we got there.
When, when you're in the, on the charging side, when you're, when you're saying how much we're gonna charge for a E Q R, or?
Oh, so you're talking about both, the more underlying, the question is whether or not those impacts of, were actually pulled in and. those impacts of, were actually pulled in and.
In, in the analysis.
Of the cost analysis in the first instance, not in rational nexus forgiven.
Exactly. Well, I mean, I mean, it ultimately is gonna come out to, I mean, right now, this, this analysis says, you know, each EQR should pay twelve hundred and something dollars of fire EMS impacts. But it's derived on a, on a calculation that does not take into account any commercial development whatsoever. And so I'm concerned that it's quote not rational. And then, on top of that, we're dealing with a, it's estimating a growth of forty-seven hundred people, population of forty-seven hundred people over the next twenty years. That's entirely unrealistic, which that, in the effort to try to reduce fees, that goes the wrong way. If our real number is twelve hundred people over the next twenty years, then by using the same calculation, our, our impact fee should not be twelve hundred, but should be fourteen hundred, I mean, forty-eight hundred dollars.
So that's forty-seven sixteen, that includes the district as well, right?
Yeah.
City only.
But keep in mind, say, the two projects that have most recently been approved, the Lofts and the Oasis Creek Apartments is, you know, roughly two hundred cumulatively, two point five residents per unit is the average number, you know, quickly there's five hundred units that could come online, so there's five, I mean, five hundred residents, excuse me. So, you know, there, then you instantly have a five percent population jump, but it's not gonna certainly straight line, it's a very linear, regular growth, but I think it's not unrealistic to, to see that kind of growth in twenty years if.
That's true if it's on a higher density.
You know, it's just, it's so erratic that you'll have five years of next to nothing, and, or like the past five years where it was all commercial square footage and no residential, and we'll have an inversion, and it'll all be residential and not commercial. You know, and I wonder if the way Louis, Louis is thinking was that there's a commensurate amount of square footage per, for every new resident, and so he's sort of tracking those two things in a.
Yeah, and I, I don't know, I guess, Mike, the, the short, I, I think there are two que, really two, two nexus questions, if you will. The first is, in the absence of any analysis of commercial, is there, is a defensible study at all? I think that's the first question, and, and I don't know that I can answer that from a legal perspective. I mean, I think that's a scientific question, and one that you guys can make probably a judgment call on. The second one is, can you create a rational nexus between residential square footage and commercial impact? You probably can, and to the extent that you are, as I said, on the impact fees, if you feel you have a defensible number, you can always go lower than that. There's nothing that says you have to use the number that's provided if you wanna go less than that, recognizing that that's a, a policy call. If you were gonna double it, I'd tell you, you probably don't have justification for that or a rational nexus for that. You know, I guess probably you just need to know more about the, the underlying assumptions that Louis used to, to rely solely on residential, which although I, I don't know that that's not fairly common in the fire industry to focus primarily on the residential, because costs are sort of significant, and then figuring out how that relates to number of square feet of commercial.
Yeah, and that was part of my question, or one of my questions to Gary, was, you know, what is our relative, you know, I mean, how many, how, how much impact do we have relatively speaking from residential versus how much from commercial? And then conversely, you know, since I think two thousand and eight or nine, was that when you guys started collecting the fees? We do have the breakdown as to when, how, how, how many fees we obtained from commercial versus how many from residential. But the problem is, the last eight years have really not been, at least hopefully, representative of what we're expecting to see in the next eight years. And so I don't think we can base, you know, we can, I don't think we can assume.
Yeah, you probably collected mostly from commercial over the last eight years, because residential construction, you know, twenty-four inch.
Right, and, and so I, I, I guess I'm, you know, I'm just, I don't know, I.
I think you're asking for a whole lot of more work to make it more defensible, but even if you get better numbers, you're not gonna get anything that's gonna, there's so much other vari, there's so much variability that what you still have at the end of the day is a guess, maybe a slightly better educated guess than you have now. So, because of that, I don't think we're too far away from where we need to be on this whole thing. I mean, you can get exact numbers, you can get nice calculation of different uses and the fire impact fees and all this, that, and the other, but you still have no idea what's gonna get built in the, in the next few years. And really, that's the biggest variable.
Do, do we give Diana a chance to?
Yes, I'm sorry, I was, I was, you know, I was trying to get just the answer on this particular question, but yes, I, we, we need to discuss school impact fees as well. And, you know, I don't know, Diana, if you have a presentation or a, you know, anything that you would like to.
It's really, yeah, relatively short, just kind of a, a weigh-in on what we were requested if, if we had any thoughts about lowering school or land dedication fees, or, you know, in lieu of, or land in lieu of fees. And so we really do have at least a, a recommendation, or we'd like to weigh in and, and say that at this time, we are recommending no change, and really, we have two reasons for that. One is that, you know, we have six entities that we work with, six communities, or three communities and three counties, and all of them charge fees, and all have similar formulas, not completely equal formulas, but often have similar formulas. The next thing is that our board has really said, we feel like we don't know enough about, you know, how does our district compare to other districts across the state in similar type environments? So our board would really like us to embark on a study, or really doing just that, and get people who are experts in this, you know, this whole concept. And, I mean, 'cause, you know, apparently the, the district started working with the communities back in the late nineties, and of course, in two thousand and two, you know, that was the current system, I think, and then just the ADU piece was added in six, and as we got from our report. So what we'd really like to say is, you know, we'd like their, our recommendation would be that there would not be an action to change it until we could come back to you with some information, particularly, like I said, because we do have the three communities and the three counties, and we would want to have similar pieces, we're certainly.
Plus, you're gonna have a slightly different thing dropped into the mix with the new elementary school, elementary, middle school, because this can be entirely in the county, which will change your formula somewhat.
Yeah, a little bit, I think it will, but in terms of looking how the communities themselves or each of the entities calculates, and, and it's really pretty similar, like, for instance, Eagle County's a little different, because in their pupil generation rates, they include all the second homeowners, so it's a little bit of a skewed number as opposed to where in our communities, you tend to get more people that actually, you know, the entities that are generating pupils out of those units. But it's really about the unit size and what we see over time, and then how are we assessing fees in relation to that, and how comparable is that with other districts? It, it, as my understanding is, you're trying to really look to see whether it's incentivizing or disincentivizing, you know, development, and so that would give us, give you really some concrete information upon which to base some of those decisions and saying, these are typical fees or not typical fees, and that kind of thing for similar sized communities.
Diana, in here, it establishes a, a value per acre, and I assume you'll be looking at that to make sure that those figures are current.
You bet.
And reflect, because that'll have an impact on you in terms of the numbers, so.
Most definitely, 'cause I think what we feel like is that this is based on a study that was done, really quite a while ago, and as we know, when things changed dramatically, you know, during the recession, and now they're starting to come back, but there's still a lot of unknowns, I mean, that was part of the discussion you were just having, it's related to those unknowns. So what we'd like to do is, as I said, really look at other similar communities, other similar school districts, particularly at like a district, you know, that serves as many different communities and counties as we do, to see, you know, what is the apples to apples comparison, if there is such a thing. We may find that there's just as much variability in this as there are other areas, but we feel that we'd be able to weigh in with a more informed decision.
Right, do you have any, have you, have you begun that study?
We haven't, you know, we've been kind of pretty busy with the other stuff, but we have, I wanna thank you all so much for your support. But at the same time, we really do want to start that. It's really slated to begin, you know, kind of in conjunction with the beginning of the school year, because by then, we'll have, really have a lot of our heavy duty design work and selection of contractors, and really, the groundbreaking won't take place for our two largest projects, of course, the East Bank School and Glenwood Springs Elementary. We're still working on some of our phase two stuff, but the scope of those won't eclipse our ability to do this, just as these others are.
And, and this is a little bit off the topic of, of impact fees, but it's somewhat related in that, you know, our, our current code allows, where did I see it? It's where I saw it in here, maybe I'm lying, about the ability, maybe it wasn't in there, to, yeah, incentives for affordable housing projects provides the authority to partially or completely waive school and dedication fees.
Right.
Okay. I did see it.
Yeah.
And I know that in your recent bond issue, you, you designated a certain amount of funding for affordable housing, and I'm curious where, if within your organization, that discussion has gone at all, I, I, I'm just hoping that we can collectively, and by collectively, I mean everyone from, you know, Basalt to, I would argue, Parachute, but I know that's out of your area of caring about it, but needs to try to get our arms around this whole housing issue, and, and I would hope that you guys would be part of that discussion, and, you know, 'cause you, you do have a specific need, and now you have a funding source for that need, and so I, I would hope that we can figure out a way to leverage that to the greatest advantage of everybody. You, you guys need teacher housing, and, you know, the city of Glenwood needs, needs housing for, you know, teachers and nurses and police and fire and, you know, engineers and lawyers and whatever else, you know, so, so anyway, I, I know that that's not exactly on this topic, but I would just hope that as, as you proceed with that, that we try to get some kind of a collective discussion about that.
I think that's gonna be really important, 'cause what I found is, even in my years in Pippin County as Aspen Superintendent, that partnership between the different entities was key in providing different options for people. Because not only, I mean, for us, ours is a rental housing, you know, program, and over time, someone's gonna want to transition into something, and that's where it's so important, I think, for community entities to look at how can we work together to create some, you know, ownership options for people, because then each of us could, you know, look at rental stuff as a transition to something. And what we'll be able to do, and we've, you know, are solidly underway to look in our guidelines and the acquisition of different, you know, projects and properties for our five million per community. And what we're finding is that, you know, we believe we'll fill those pretty quickly, and then it's, where do you take people after that? Because there will come a point where people wanna do something else. We believe it'll make a big difference for us, and to be able to attract and retain staff, because we hear stories every day where someone says, we love it here, we wanna stay, but, you know, we just, we can't stay if we really wanna own a home someday, or just even the cost of rental for like our, let's say, a single parent with a, with one or two children, very difficult for them to make it. So, and, and this really would be for all of our, you know, service providers, as you said, 'cause we're bu, building into our guidelines, and if we do have a unit that's empty, highly unlikely, but at the same time, that it would be offered to other service providers for the remainder of that year, so to speak, and then that next year would be given back to a school district employee.
I guess one, one thought that I would hope is that, you know, 'cause, you know, building actual housing for teachers is one way to spend that five million dollars. There are multiple tools that can be used to try to provide, you know, achieve the same end result, but perhaps where we're leveraging the money to a greater advantage, you know, and I, you know, and that's what I hope to, hope to discuss, is that, you know, there can be some public-private partnerships, there can be things like the city's E-HOP program that, you know, I don't know if you, the school district has anything like that now, where the city currently has, we're gonna try and expand our, our funding of it, but, you know, we have a program where we, is it a zero percent interest loan, or is it a very low interest?
Low, I don't think it's zero.
But it's a very low interest loan to essentially buy down, down payments for.
Yeah, well, we can do that, because we feel like, you know, when we're up and running and have all of our units, we'll generate approximately a half a million dollars a year, which can be used to either purchase additional units or look at creative solutions or down payment assistance, things like that, to really help people make that leap to homeownership.
Are you, are you locked by the bond measure into building affordable housing?
We believe we are for the first phase of it, because what we've said is, you know, we really have kind of told each of our communities, we're looking to purchase fifteen to twenty units in each of those three communities, so we feel like that was our agreement with our community. But we also talked about during the election and during our liter, you know, in any of our campaign literature, that then that would create a special purpose fund, since the, you know, properties themselves are paid for by the bond and, you know, generously by our communities, that then the revenue that's generated from the rent would stay in a special purpose fund to stay in that whole housing arena, and then, and with, to be able to look at other options such as down payment assistance. So we believe once we're looking at dollars generated, then we have some latitude to really begin looking at that, and, and I think we heard a lot of encouragement from people to do that, 'cause they'd like to see us then help move to that next law.
Hey, Mike, real quick, I know our meeting starts here, or we got another agenda, I think Carl would want a little bit of your time.
Okay.
Hey, Carl.
No, it's six, it's six. We do need to, um, do you want this topic back in about a month? Or what's the?
Well, okay, hey, I don't, maybe we'll get a opinion here, I mean, I think, I'd like to get an opinion from our attorney, maybe not something formal, something, not something written, maybe we need that, I don't know. Thumbs up or thumbs now, if this is considered legally defensible in terms of firing EMS fees, this, this study, is it, to use for rational nexus?
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with your concern that going out and spending over twenty-five thousand dollars to, to, you know, incorporate commercial impact in this study, probably not a good plan.
It's just part of our conversation. Do you, with that legal opinion in hand?
If it is, then we move forward.
Okay, do you want it on the next agenda then, to vote on, if it's legal?
Well, can we, can we look at it, at, at that agenda in terms of, I, I kinda feel like today, we, we tried biting off a heck of a lot more than we ended up being able to swallow on our agenda.
Okay.
And, so can we just play it by ear, and if it can fit on the June second agenda, let's do that, if it, if it can't, then let's.
Easily done.
Okay.
Very, yeah, it's not. Do you need more work session time on this topic or not?
I don't.
You don't?
I, I don't, because I think what we want costs lots of money and they don't have it.
Okay, so I'll get a legal opinion and put it in the agenda where it fits best for the second and sixteenth.
Okay.
Okay? Or, or some other time. We do need to change over the room and feed you.
Right.
Yes, I need to.
Thank you for.
I apologize, I apologize for trying to stand in for.